So let's call the meeting to order and let's get going. Stacy, you're with us, right? Yes, good.
Yes.
Great. We have a fairly light agenda items-wise, although we have had a couple extra things come up that we're gonna be talking about as well tonight. So we'll see how the timing goes. All the minutes after any agenda item of course guestimates and not to preclude any conversation. Any changes to the agenda as we have it now? Ray?
Yes, I would like to ask for time to discuss Derek Chase's latest attempt to have an event here ready.
Okay. We could add that into other business at the end of the other things we're talking about? Does that work?
No.
Okay. Any other items to add to the agenda or changes to the agenda? Okay, I think we actually have to vote on changing the agenda. So Stacy and Jane, are we okay with adding?
Yeah, I make a motion to change the agenda.
To add conversation about the Overland event?
Yes.
Stacy, you okay with adding the Overland conversation? Okay, so we'll do that. We'll do that at item number seven. Okay. Approval of the minutes from January 6th. Any comments, edits?
No.
Nope. Motion to approve?
I, I motion to approve the minutes from January 6th.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Reports, mail and email.
We did get an email from the Ludlow Planning Commission that they're having a meeting, warning and documentation hearing on February 18th about amending their zoning and flood hazard bylaws.
Really?
Yeah. So if you, anybody want more information, just go to the Ludlow PC website.
Okay.
And that's all the mail we got and there's no new permit requests.
Well, we should maybe check that out. That'd be interesting to see the changes they're making. Okay. Regional Planning Commission. Kathy Rondo is our Mount Ascutney Regional Commission Representative. She cannot be here tonight, but if I can find her email, I can give her a report. Hold on. Okay, so this is from Mount Ascutney Regional Commission and activity. They had their November meeting resolution signed by all the commissioners for a zero, Vision Zero Resolution for Mount Ascutney Regional Commission, dealing with traffic and injury from accidents on the roadways. Vision Zero supports the design of streets and transportation systems to move all people safely striving to achieve a transportation system free from fatalities and serious injuries with the goal of zero deaths on the roads in our region by 2040. Wouldn't that be nice? She did send out a link to the survey and hopefully some people have taken the survey. I guess there were some residents who mentioned the intersection of Tyson Road and Route 106 right outside, as well as parking issues along 20-foot during the summer. Mark will be doing a follow-up with towns at some point in the future to further this project along. They did.
This was, this was the initiative taken or sort of announced to discuss at the meeting last night, the Select Board or two nights ago.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
They had a representative.
Okay, great. Thank you. I was only able to attend part of that, so I think I missed that part. There was a meeting in December for Mark as well where they accepted the final audit report and they voted and approved bylaw amendments as presented. I guess we'd have to go to the Mark website to find out what those are. And they reviewed the regional project priority list and approved the list as submitted. Mark resolved to have a more active participation in the regional project priority process of project descriptions and to clarify the ranking system. They approved an application for supplemental RLF funding and voted to approve additional funds for the Ben High Project and Parks Wilson Project. Mark also discussed housing and a needs assessment for 2025 to 2029. There's a strong recommendation that the Planning Commission and indeed everyone who's interested, go to the Mark website, which is www.marcvt.org. Click on Home, scroll down to Housing Snapshots and Resources where you can find a snapshot on the town of Reading and scan through the facts for Reading. I actually did it today. It looks like this, if you can see. It's kind of green bubbles and it's really interesting. It talks about our population and what kind of households we have and housing units and increases and decreases. So if you haven't done it, it's a good thing to take a look at. And a lot of this information sounds pretty dense, so if you're really interested in it, we probably all need to go to the Mark website and dig a little deeper to understand their bylaw changes and audit report and so on. So that's the Mark report. Any questions?
No.
Okay. Energy Board, I see we have Brian Callie. Thank you for appearing. Any updates?
Sure. Maybe just super brief to say, you know, we kind of worked in three major activities. One is the solar array. Solar. The main things now are, one is to do what we can to see if we can get the rebate from the feds to the tune of 30% of the cost, which we have to apply for by June. Well, actually, we will apply just after the end of our fiscal year to get the 30% back. But we have to submit something to the IRS before then just to get a registration number. So that's still the one outstanding task that we have to do. And that should be okay pending no rescinding of the Inflation Action Act. So I'll just have to watch and see what happens there. And then the other side of that is monitoring regularly the production of the array, make sure that everything's okay. And it is, it's been a cloudy and snowy month this month, so January was exceptionally good for what we expected and February is lower than, than, you know, than January is at the same rate, but that's the way it's gonna be for the winter months anyway. And, you know, so, but all good. And I think the only other thing on that is that I've been watching how much each town building is getting to make sure that there's, it matches kind of its fair, basically how we're distributing is based on consumption. And I did make a change going, I did do this four times a year. I just made a change because the firehouse basically has more credits than they believe for the entire year because they had two months where they were the only ones getting it. So I pulled them back to almost nothing so that they can burn through their credits before we start giving them more. Because they all, they automatically get their daily use anyway, right? So like, it's only when the sun isn't shining that they're actually drawing on any electricity. And so we wanna give them less so that we can share more with other buildings. That's the reality. And I'll check in in three months and just see how that's working. So all the other time that we should start to see more credits going forward for a bit. The second thing is the MERC program. So the town has gotten a front of the first 20% of that grant so that we can start to cover costs of the first bit of work. And the first bit of work really is to get architects and engineers who are appropriate on the different buildings to do the designs that we need to ultimately submit for RFPs, to get contractors in to do the electrification work for the four town buildings that were the targets of the MERC grant that we received. And really antecedent to most of that work will be for three of the four buildings is to get the Department of Historic Preservation, Vision of Historic Preservation to weigh in on our plans, the initial plans anyway. And so Bill, Nuka and myself are working with the building sponsors to get submissions in, which we expect to do over the next week or two. And DHP has promised a 30-day turnaround, so we should get some feedback relatively quickly on any input they have on historic buildings. So that's happening. And then the last thing is weatherization, which is an ongoing thing. And we've had, you know, a steady slope, but steady stream of clients in town who have raised their hand and wanted us to kind of weatherize. And so we're, we actually have a job this Saturday, so we're doing one on Saturday. So those are our three major business activities. I think the only other thing I would add from last time, I had asked questions about, you know, was there anything in town plan about climate change, climate resilience, basically in the context of increased flooding, et cetera? And, you know, raise one hand and you get an action. So Martha Harrison from Mount Ascutney Regional Planning Commission asked me to join an advisory panel that is a group of people who are advising a state group, planning group that is going to create some guidelines for how to update town plans to reflect some of the things that we were talking about. And so, so that's like, it's almost a two-year project, so don't expect anything anytime soon, but I am involved in that now. And it's a really interesting people and I'm learning a lot, hopefully at least some things that we can bring back to Reading from that. That's it.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. And thank you for all the time and hard work you're clearly putting into this. Like, these are really tangible things that are happening, so that's great to see. I heard from Martha also thinking of energy about needing to update the Reading Energy Plan. I think I forwarded it to you. But Mark is, Mark is needing to advise towns on updating their energy plans, but they had a staffing vacancy and they're just now trying to get up to speed on the data. So keep an eye on that space. I think that's something, obviously, the Energy Committee should be involved in, but I think the Planning Commission is involved in that too. So maybe we can have a mind of working on that together down the road.
That sounds great. I'll definitely be sure to reach out to her. I didn't, I had not heard that until you said it to me, so it would be good to know a little bit more about what they're doing.
Yeah.
We, we have spoken with her a little bit about the fact that we felt like it would be good to make it a little more, you know, fact-based on what we have and maybe a little more achievable and realistic for where we're at. So anyway, we'll, I'll connect with her and definitely we'll wanna stay in together.
That'd be great. And is there a document that is the Reading Energy Plan that you could share with us?
I think that's just buried in the town plan.
It's in town plan?
It's, yeah, Energy Plan, yeah. And it's, it's quite well known for what it is, but, yeah. I can see why it would be upgraded.
So Planning Commission, maybe we should go to the town plan and read that. Martha says that she thinks she'll be ready to start talking about that in March or April.
Okay. At this point, and just pay attention and see what's happening and then we'll figure out how we can deal with it.
Sounds good. All right. Zoning Administrator has another meeting tonight and unfortunately is not able to attend this meeting. ZBA?
Well, there are no new permits issued anyway, so. And ZBA, no, quiet.
Are there any new applications submitted?
No.
Okay.
Not since November.
We had talked last meeting about next areas of focus now that we've all caught our breath after the year-plus or two-year-plus zoning ordinance review and revision. And that's our agenda item tonight. We did talk about it a little bit last time, but I'm not sure we made any firm decisions about where we should be focusing future meetings. So I see this as a fairly open topic. Last time, just to remind everyone, we talked about possibly taking a look at the town plan, even though it's not due for official revision, required revision for years now. But we certainly can poke away at various sections, like that energy section we might be looking at. Thinking, we could continue thinking about affordable housing possibilities. We talked a little bit last time about revisiting short-term rental issues and whether or not we should be reconsidering that, maybe reaching out to the Select Board and seeing what they would like to task us with, with that. Thoughts?
One thing that Lisa Sylvester brought up is that she would like, after we had the last presentation by Deboz and King, which was 90%, we thought 10% more. She was thinking it's a good idea to create a wastewater commission.
Commission or committee?
Well, committee.
Committee.
Committee. So to try to do a little, go a little deeper with speaking to people in the town and, you know, maybe planning something for the future. So that was just the very beginning of it, that she brought that up on Monday night, so.
And is that a committee of the Select Board?
No.
Is that the Planning Commission's?
No.
It's just a...
No.
The way it was sort of addressed is a new committee, possibly by members. Bill was vocal and then Brian had also typed up about it during the Select Board's meeting. It was just sort of starting the conversation of whether or not there would be people wishing to be involved in a five-person committee to reach out to some of the residents that didn't return the survey. I believe you got 77 possibilities in the village and only 44 responses to the survey that the engineers put out. So the, I gather from what I got out of it, she wanted to have a committee to, we have locals, more locals, reach out to those people who hadn't responded to the, the initial survey to dig a little deeper, find out why they haven't responded. Is it something where they just don't want people in their business, which is probably most of it? You know, whether or not Bill could kind of prod them or help them get water testing done on their potable water source or well name and to see if there were any issues with that.
I think it was also, I don't wanna say educating people, like, well, Lisa's right there.
Lisa's right there.
Yeah. It was more about like explaining in depth to people what the purpose of, you know, creating a new wastewater system and potable water. But Lisa, if you feel like explaining a little more?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I've been having a hard time taking off my, my video. Yeah, I think you guys explained it really well. I think that it seems very disappointing to me that of 77 surveys, only 44 were returned. I think that people are suspicious of just receiving a kind of anonymous survey, survey so to speak. And if we could start a committee that roughly the size of the Arbor Committee, about five people, and just, you know, talk to people, educate them, and educate them about the benefits of having a wastewater system throughout the town. You know, it, it isn't just that the people in the village are going to benefit from this. It'll bring other things to our town. So that's my hope anyway. I do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow with a gentleman on the West Windsor Planning Commission who was on their wastewater committee. It was 15 years ago that they put in their system. And I just wanna pick his brain about, you know, what sort of roadblocks they had, how did the people in their town feel about it? Because again, it's just in their, in the village, it's not throughout the whole town. So that's my thoughts. I'm gonna bring more to the next meeting and try and get this all rolling.
And have you populated the committee already or are you looking for volunteers?
Not at all. We don't even have the committee formed yet. It was literally yesterday evening, just, or Monday, just a discussion about it, that I want to get this going. And I think we would need to create the scope of the committee prior to, you know, asking for volunteers. So I have had some people reach out to me separately saying that, you know, they're very interested in these sort of projects and have a background in it. And those are the kind of people that we need to have help from. There's a lot of resources here in the town, as we know, as far as human resources. And I think that neighbors speaking to neighbors versus just having, you know, a company like Deboz and King putting out a survey would probably benefit us.
Yeah, no, it sounds like a good idea. Do you see this committee as reporting to the Select Board or as the Planning Commission? Do we have a role in this or is this the Select Board's?
No. No, I would say it's probably, you know, I would, just like the Arbor Committee, I think it would report to the Select Board and, you know, bringing the ideas to the table and up for discussion. And perhaps if there are parts of it that might come under your umbrella, then we might take that back to you. But I think it's probably a, you know, Select Board thing.
Great. Maybe one thing we can do in addition to looking at the energy section of the town plan is to review the wastewater section of the town plan and just see if it's reflecting kind of the current conversation.
That sounds great.
I haven't looked at that in a while.
Fabulous, thank you.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
My pleasure, thank you. Stacy?
Other, other thoughts on things we should be? It sounds like town plan is ripe for us to take a look at. I think we should be looking at the energy section to make sure that it is keeping up with Mark's work and Brian's work and the Energy Committee's work. I think we should be looking at the town plan on the wastewater section. Sorry, I'm taking notes and talking at the same time, which is never a good thing for Other places that we should be looking at in the town plan based on things that are going on right now to make sure?
River corridors.
River corridors. Well, the Ludlow changes should be interesting. I would say that the Planning Commission, the three of us, should be taking a look at what Ludlow's suggesting. My understanding from Mark is that the state is, for lack of a better word, kind of taking over this area in a couple of years. So I'm kind of curious about what Ludlow is doing in this interim phase. The river corridors are very complicated and have real-world implications around insurance rates and FEMA reimbursements. So it's not something to be undertaken without, I think, some serious legal review and outside advising. But maybe before the next meeting, we can take a look individually at the Ludlow revisions and...
And the Ludlow revisions are being presented on the 18th?
The 18th, it's a hearing.
February 18th.
Yeah.
Do you have any at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock? No, you have 10, 12?
I can, I'll look it up in the email again and I'll send you that email. It's in our emails to the PC if you...
And we can join, is it right?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, there was a Zoom link.
I assume that is gonna be covered by Akima Valley TV? The Ludlow?
Yes.
Meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, let's try to do that if we can. Other thoughts for things we should be looking at? I mean, these are, these are some things. So when we're setting up the agenda for next time, it could be to report back to this group on Ludlow's hearing. We could bring copies of those sections of the town plan and start to take a look at them and see if there are gaps. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking up the Ludlow, see if it's in here.
So we're merging into agenda item number six, which is planning for our next meeting, which is gonna be held Thursday, March 6th, which is a calendar change. It's not on the usual Monday because, hmm, voting. I think voting is set up that night. So we had to change it to the Thursday, just so everybody knows. And I will try to be good about sending something to Front Porch Forum about that as well. Anything else for this discussion item around our next meeting or future meetings? Or are we ready to move to the new agenda item? Okay, let's move on. Ray, would you, you've asked for the agenda item to be put on. Would you like to introduce the topic?
Sure. Let me start.
Sure.
Okay. Because Derek Chase refuses to follow the rules and regulations that he has been previously advised of and is once again advertising an event to be held on May 24th through the 26th here in Reading for an admission price of between $250 and $325. I'm asking this board to follow through with Section 4451 of our zoning ordinance and send him a certified letter giving him seven days to cancel the Reading event and to post the cancellation on his website. 4451 is enforcement of penalties. Any person who violates any bylaw after it has been adopted under this chapter or who violates a comparable ordinance or regulation adopted under prior enabling laws shall be fined up to $200 for each offense. No action may be brought under this section unless the alleged offender has had at least seven days' warning notice by certified mail. An action may be brought without this seven-day notice and opportunity to cure the alleged offender who repeats violation of the bylaw or ordinance after the seven-day notice period and within the next succeeding 12 months. Also, on his website that's advertising this, he has stated that camping will be available in Reading. I'd like to submit the State of Vermont permit and licensing information regarding campgrounds. Any lot with four or more campsites on a lot that are occupied or made available to be occupied for vacation or recreational purposes by camping units such as tents, yurts, TPs, lean-to's, camping cabins, and recreational vehicles requires a permit. So again, I'm officially asking the board to go forward with the enforcement that he's ignoring the previous case that was against him for running these events.
I think the, it's the zoning administrator that does the enforcement. And I know he knows about it. At the Select Board meeting on Monday, Jack, my husband, brought up, a month ago, Jack brought up the excursion. And it was the first that Bob had heard about it. So at the last meeting, Jack said, what is happening? And Bob said, the only thing he can say now is that he's in discussion with Derek Chase. So, and that was all he could tell us. So I don't know.
Well, the only discussions he can be having are to make him cancel events. I mean, you can't have any other discussions.
Right, I'm just, you know, explaining, you know, what he said to us.
So as of today, there has not been an application for additional use filed?
There has not been an application for any permit or anything.
Yeah, permit or variance. And I have exactly the meeting in its entirety, and I would love to discuss this. Ray, I wish you would've been there because that would've been the perfect place for you to bring this up.
Yeah.
Bob, as the zoning administrator in the Select Board, are the gun-burning body who should be the enforcement of something like this. And I believe the town's attorney would need to get involved due to the prior situation and the lawsuits that happened, what, four years ago, five years ago?
So...
Two years ago, three years ago.
I, I can imagine, you are the chair of the CBA, but I can imagine making a motion to make a formal request as this board to the zoning administrator to enforce both the zoning ordinance and the decision of the planning, the zoning board from two, three years ago.
The ZBA, yeah.
Does that, does that seem right to do? I'm just gonna make that motion. So I would, I would move that the zoning board make a... So I would, I would move that the zoning board make a formal request in writing, by email, or by a letter, whichever is appropriate, to enforce the zoning ordinance and the decision reached by the prior zoning board. And to give us an update on the status of this before our next meeting.
Okay.
So are second on that?
Second?
Okay. Stacy, can you agree with that? Does that seem...
I could agree with that, just because it's been, there's been hearing and there was a determination made by, determination made by a previous board. But again, I think this falls solely on the zoning administrator and the Select Board's round to pursue with legal, whatever is, whatever's necessary. And we're, we're not the, we're not the governing body. We're the legislation, legislative body that creates the rules, we're not the enforcement body. So I, I really wish Ray would have brought this front and center at the Select Board meeting, where they could have, without getting us involved in it, he could have filled directly with the people who are going to have to take action.
Well, it seems like that's what Jack did. And then the answer we got was, we're, "I'm in discussion and I can't say anything more." So, I guess, I have no idea what it means. I have no idea what we're gonna hear.
I brought along the official, from the Vermont, excuse me, from the, yeah, I can't think of the name, the League of Cities and Towns.
Okay.
The administrative officer shall administer the bylaws literally and should not have the power to permit any handed element that is not in conformance with those bylaws.
Correct. Yes.
And we have no evidence that any of that's been happening. We...
No.
We don't know.
We, we were told at the Select Board meeting that Bob was in discussions with the Chases. We don't know how deep that conversation has gone. We don't know if the town's attorney's been involved, if the Chase's attorneys have been involved. So for us to continue this conversation, I don't think is a great idea.
We can, we can write a letter. We can write a letter. It's almost like we know about it now. The ZBA created this determination and that we have to, you know, we want him to abide by the determination that the ZBA has brought down on this issue. So we can write a letter like that, you know.
I would add, I, there's, I think, I'm asking him, asking the ZA of the Select Board to respond.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have the, we have the motion on the table, just so Shenan can get it in the minutes as a proper vote. Let's vote to approve that, all the things that I said, if I can roll them back in my mind.
Motion for ZB formally to request the ZA to enforce the zoning ordinance.
Yes, and the decision of the prior zoning board of appeals. Yeah, zoning board appeals. And to, and I would, and I think I added, and to give us a report back on the status.
Well, so unless the camping part of it is shut down, we're gonna end up with all sorts of people coming in from all over the place. And it's gonna be too late to do anything about it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor of the letter?
Yes.
Yes. Of the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
And I do, I just want, I think we should err of some caution here, but we shouldn't get too involved in a conversation about the situation based on hearsay posts. We need to, we need to look at the facts. And Bob Allen, our zoning administrator, our town attorney in the Select Board, should be gathering those facts so we know what we're getting in detail. We, I don't think emotions should be running this part of the conversation.
I, I agree with that Stacy. I think at this point, we are trying to do a little bit of fact-finding and get ahead of it. There is no application that has been filed for a conditional use permit. And yet, there is an advertisement and ticket sales occurring. So it's a little bit of a tricky situation. So I, I think it is February. This event is being advertised for May. That gives us a little bit of time to encourage the ZA through this request to make the proper enforcement and report back to us about what that is so that we're not caught unawares.
In a timely manner.
In a timely manner. I would suggest probably, Jane, that is your chase as the zoning chair? To make that communication?
Didn't the previous agreement also advise him that he could not run a business in the rural residential area?
Yes.
So charging $250 to $325 to run a business?
Yes.
Without knowing the facts of the case, it's hard to say whether or not, for sure, he is...
Well, we have the facts here on his page.
Well, we have his website, but yeah. You know, it's hard to say whether or not it's in violation of the zoning order. But it, it looks like there is likely an issue. So thank you for bringing it up, Ray. It clearly is percolating, percolating up from several areas and is something that we need to look at pretty carefully and pretty quickly.
And I can understand, we all, all of us, four of us, Ray included, live in that very close proximity and we wouldn't want anything to jeopardize a future position.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. Now, this is responding to comments that are being raised and requests that are being made to us to look into it and take action. So I think that's what we're doing. And that can be the letter that you prepare for the zoning administrator.
Okay. I realize that it's probably not something that we can actually prevent, but in addition to these kinds of events, they're destroying our Class IV roads.
Yes.
When David Goodhouse, when Goodhouse Logging finished the logging event up on Ridge Trail, he restored all of the water bars in there. These large events with these big vehicles broke down all of those water bars, which were, the result was even Claire's driveway being wiped out and the pond being filled with silt. And then another thunderstorm came through later and the same thing happened up on Tiffy's pasture road, up above Dave Appleton's house. They wiped out all the water bars up there and Dave's road was completely taken up. And he and his family for over two weeks had to walk, hop their cars on the water and walk up to their house because they couldn't get to drive up there anymore.
So, going back to our previous agenda item, if we're gonna start looking at the town plan, maybe another section to be looking at is what we say about our Class IV roads.
Yeah.
I know different towns have different approaches to their Class IV roads, about when they're open, when they're closed. I am not entirely sure about the interplay of state law with the Class IV roads. I'm sure there is some, but I imagine it's deference to the towns. I think governing those Class IV roads is a Select Board issue. But to the extent that the Planning Commission is in charge of making recommendations for the town plan, that would be a good section for us to take a look at and see if it is compatible with what the town wants for its Class IV road and rural, rural character. If one constituency is making it impossible for other constituencies to use it, maybe that needs an adjustment.
Yeah, when we get involved in that conversation, I think we should reach out to Mark and we should reach out to the LCT to align ourselves with what other towns are doing effectively about the state sports.
Yep. It's probably a conversation worth bringing in the, I only know their acronym, the Reading Rats, the All-Terrain Sportsmen. And having them involved in this conversation as well. Because I know they like to see themselves as stewards of some of the Class IV roads. And I think that they have taken fairly good care of them through the years. This is sort of a newer commercialization of that asset. Again, making notes for myself. Okay. Well, I think we have an action item for that.
Thank you.
And let's put that on the agenda for next month to report back what the status is. If you could ask for a reply prior to the next meeting, that would be great. Because that will give a little bit of time to figure out other steps, if need be. That concludes number seven. Number eight is just open public comments, if anyone has any that are not already on the agenda. Crickets. All right, so I think that concludes our formal agenda tonight. Reminder, next meeting is Thursday, March 6th. I will put it in FPF. And it is always posted on the town website and in Town Hall as well. Great. I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
All right, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.